Good evening and welcome to the August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for being here this evening, either virtually or here in Bellhaven Community Center. For those attending virtually, there is a glow icon on your screen that will allow you to listen to tonight's meeting in Spanish. I will now begin our call to order. After I have read the call to order, the call to order will also be read in Spanish. Established by state law, our State Planning Commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the City Council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body, that's the City Council. We are a policy implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with the city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. Commission also reviews city-initiated land use planning projects such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews bell over posts requiring the use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. When applicable, planning commission reviews below market rate or BMR housing agreements associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the City Council. Commission also serves as the recommending body to the City Council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with those projects. If applicable, planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with these projects. We work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for implementation of our general plan, zoning ordinance, and zoning policies. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or an interested member of the public. And there will be opportunities to speak publicly for each specific agenda item as well as your general public comment. The same thing, I am particularly grateful to city staff and the staff at the community center for making it possible to have tonight's meeting here. It was amazing, we recently opened many, many, many things. Perfect, alright. We have already been able to do the call to order in Spanish. And so with that completed, I will move on to the next section of our agenda, the roll call. Commissioner Doe. Here. Commissioner Eric. Here. Commissioner Sillen.
Here.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Here.
I am here.
We're going to share.
Vice Chair Eric and Commissioner Cruzim are absent this evening. We do have five commissioners here in the room, which is maybe tomorrow. So with that, we will move on to the next section of our agenda, which is reports and announcements. Mr. Smith, are there any reports or announcements from staff this evening?
Good evening, Chair Schindler and of course the Planning Commission. We're excited to be hosting the first Planning Commission meeting at the Bellhaven Community Campus. We appreciate everybody being patient with us as we adjust to the new technology setup. I do have just a quick announcement for tomorrow's City Council meeting on August twenty-seventh. There will be three items that may be of interest to the commission, so the first would be a study session on affordable housing development on the city on downtown parking lots. Badges program each four G of housing elements, we will even add looking at the prioritization of those laws and the potential discussion process, the council feedback on that. Another item will be the appeal of the planning commission decision on thirteen ninety-nine Villa Road. And then the third item we need to be an update to the twenty-three-five action plan for implementation. So we're working from twenty-five to twenty-thirty. That is all I have for you for announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I have a quick clarifying question on this little room. Was that an appeal or a call up?
It was a call up by a council member.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Do commissioners have, any other commissioners have questions about the updates announcement? Great. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Since we have no questions, we will move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is an I O T, the general public comment component. And so for instructions on how to participate and to begin our public comment period, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Carter, who is serving as our clerk this evening. Mr. Carter, if you please, give us any in person and virtually instructions.
Thank you very much, evening Chair. My apologies, good evening Chair Schindler. And commissioners and members of the public, Matt Bruder, associate planner, the chief clerk for tonight. I'd like to advise anyone interested in writing a public comment on this item to please provide a comment card and walk up to the table here. We have comment cards available in the back of the building closer to the parking lot. And we at the moment have one comment card in person. My apologies, it's for the item in question. This is for the general public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. And at the moment, in looking at soon, I do not see any hands raised. We do have one item that just came in for public comment here. We can have the person come up if you'd like at this time.
Mr. Carter, we actually just paused the cabinet to be sure that everyone is seated up to here. I'm getting a little bit of an echo and I see that there may be some audio challenges going on. So I don't know, potentially we need to repeat any of the instructions.
I apologize for that. We shall work on that at this time and we'll see if we can make the audio more audible for everyone, something a little bit louder for everyone in the building. Okay, in light of that, I can speak louder. Maybe everyone can hear better with the audio a little more loudly. Okay. So I guess with everyone using the microphones this evening, including myself, please speak louder and more clearly into the microphone for the members of the public and commissioners and staff who are in the building this evening. As I had stated earlier, I apologize for the audio issues, but we can have our one non-agendized, non-agenda public commenter come up at this time if you'd like, if that's okay with the audio now.
Yes, thank you.
And I'll introduce you, sorry. Arina Lal, is that right? Arina, yes, you may speak. We're going to set up a timer. You just give me one moment for three minutes and then you'll be able to speak at that time.
If you're being the first person willing to pass that, which is probably my first. Mr. Carter, please, just as it comes up, thank you.
Hi, my name is Arina Lal, and I've been a resident of Bellhaven for thirty years. And recently, in the last three years, my husband and I have the opportunity to purchase our own home. And every day I look out the window and there's a bus stop right across the street and I see people waiting in the sun when no, there is no seating at this bus stop. There is no shade, nowhere to find a spot to find some shade. On hot summer days, I often see the same type of people taking to lunch along the corner of New Bridge and especially during our hot summers, really hard for people to stand out there in the sun. One day, recently, I had two young teenagers not on my door asking for water. Because the bus was late, there was no shade. Your mission statement that you want to provide, those in underserved communities, environmental justice, that means that everyone should have equal protection and advantages when it comes to the environment. We need, we need people like you in your position to help bring the shade, bring the space, and maybe people get to work. That's really all I have to say, being a member.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Carter, do we have any other comments or hands raised at this time for our general public comments?
I see no additional hands raised. You could go ahead and close public comment if you'd like at this time. We'll wait a little longer. Thank you.
Let's just give it one more moment, just given we're all in a new technical environment here. Are there any other hands raised at this time, Mr. Carter?
I can confirm, I still see no other hands raised. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of our agenda. There, and move on to the next sections. There are no items in our consent calendar, which would have been section eight. So we will move on to section act, public hearing. We have one item in our public hearing section of the meeting this evening. I will now read the description of this agenda item, Act One. The planning commission is considering resolutions. We recommend that City Council amend the general plan by adding an environmental justice element, updating the safety element, and determining if the actions are addressed in previously certified subsequent environmental impact report under the conforming Environmental Quality Act, code C. The environmental justice element is a state mandated element for cities with disadvantaged and or underserved communities. The element addresses public health risks and environmental justice concerns and focuses on Bellhaven and Bayfront neighborhoods as cities disadvantaged underserved communities. The environmental justice element includes seven goals that focus on, one, addressing health risks; two, reducing pollution exposure and improving air quality; three, actively providing public facilities; four, promoting high-quality formal beauty in our senses; five, ensuring safe, sanitary, and stable parks; six, encouraging physical activity and active transportation; and seven, creating equitable civic innovation. The safety element is also a state mandated element of the general plan, originally adopted in two thousand and thirteen. Since then, state law requires safety elements to address climate change, adaptation, and relativity, and giving increased attention to wildfire and evacuation routes. The safety element update focuses on these points. The amendments are covered by previously certified environmental impact report under CPO. That is part of the policy element update in January twenty-two. Mr. Chen, I believe you are going to hear your earlier presentation this evening. And to get us started with the presentation, I think there was a number two speakers.
Thank you, Chair Schindler, members of the commission and members of the Menlo Park community. It's so great to be here with you all this evening. This is familiar basis for the Menlo Park community meetings. So thank you so much for joining us today.
Alright, Mr. Chen, I think we're going to need to up increase the volume and or end or potentially read into the microphones from this house. Let's try to.
Okay, please give me a thumbs to the side if I need to speak a little bit louder, just a little bit, okay? Is this some good volume?
I don't know what the past years are.
Good volume, good, good. Okay, good evening. Thank you again, everyone, for bearing with us as we work through these technical difficulties. We're very excited to be here with you all this evening in this new space. My name is Calvin Chan. I'm a senior planner with the Community Development Department. I'm joined with other members of our Housing Element Update Project team that I'll introduce right now. We have Principal Planner and Planning Commission Liaison Tom Smith to my left. We also have Associate Planner Matt Bruder to my right. Sitting alongside us is Community Development Director Deanna Chow, as well as our Assistant City Attorney Mary Wagner. We have President of M Group Jeff Bradley here in the audience with us. We also have Director of Programs Kate Kennedy with Climate Resilient Communities. And virtually joining us this evening, we also have Assistant City Attorney S. Schaefer, Managing Director of Change Up Solutions Eric Callaway, as well as Principal Planner Asher Cohen with M Group. So thank you for letting us introduce members of our project team. This evening, we'll be giving an overview of different project milestones as well as a community outreach. We'll be reviewing highlighted refinements to the Environmental Justice, or EJ, safety elements since the April twenty-twenty-four drafts and the June twenty-twenty-four study sessions with the commission and city council. Staff recommends that the planning commission this evening adopt resolutions recommending that the city council amend the general plan to include Menlo Park's first environmental justice element and to also update the safety element. Alongside that, the planning commission is recommended to determine that these actions are addressed in the previously certified subsequent environmental impact report under the California Environmental Quality Act. In our first section of the presentation, we'll be talking about different project milestones as well as community outreach. Beginning in twenty-twenty-one, the development of the twenty-twenty-three to twenty-thirty-one housing element, the preparation of the EJ element, as well as the update of the safety element, collectively called the Housing Element Update Project, has been a multi-year effort that has been led by city staff as well as a team of consultants managed by the M Group. The City Council adopted the Housing Element Update in January twenty-twenty-three and amended it in January twenty-twenty-four. The State Housing and Community Development Department, or HCD, certified the city's housing element earlier this year. The adoption of the city's first environmental justice element, the update of the safety element, are the remaining two components of our overall Housing Element Update Project. These two elements, along with the land use, circulation, housing, open space and conservation, and noise element, make up the city's general plan, which helps guide planning decisions across our entire Menlo Park community. I'll take a moment to recap our road to adoption with some document milestones. In April of two thousand and twenty-two, the city released the Neighborhood Profiles of Environmental Justice Considerations Report. This was a report that helped provide a summary analysis on various Menlo Park neighborhood social, economic, as well as environmental conditions. This analysis was the first step to help us to identify both disadvantaged communities as defined by state regulations. And in Menlo Park, we use that preferred term of underserved communities. The Neighborhood Profiles was very influential and helpful for informing a very extensive as well as a thorough community outreach and engagement effort to help determine priorities and plans for improvement. A little bit later that same year, in December of two thousand and twenty-two, we released the initial draft of the Environmental Justice Element as well as the Safety Element Update. Earlier this year in April, we released a revised draft of the EJ element as well as the Safety Element Update following various meetings with the community, planning commission, and city council. This summer, we had the opportunity to conduct additional meetings with the community. It's great to see a lot of familiar faces here this evening, as well as with the planning commission and city council. And following that, the project team revised drafts of all the elements, and we are presenting them now this evening for adoption. For the next couple of slides, I'll hand the presentation over to Kate Kennedy, Director of Programs with Climate Resilient Communities, or CRC, to discuss how the city as well as CRC work together to engage the community in different robust conversations, really learn about different methods to advance environmental justice and safety around Menlo Park.
Let's just do a quick volume check.
Volume check on me? Nice. I don't usually have a problem with volume.
Thank you. I think we're okay for Mr. Kennedy to continue.
Just one second. Alright, perfect. I'm not sure if that might need to be shared again.
In case there's anyone just joining us, we're waiting for the visual presentation, the slides to come back onto the screen. Thank you for your patience.
Alright, thank you for hanging with us. So I'd just like to start by kind of recapping the community outreach process that we've gone up to to this point. So the, this process began in earnest in the summer of two thousand and twenty-one with some pop-up meetings and the first kind of community kickoff discussion. It continued then to some more general community meetings, three focus groups.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Kennedy. I think we are having some, are we corrected? Thank you. I think we've got the translation. Apologies. Please proceed. Alright, that was a thumbs up. Thank you.
Alright, now we're ready. So throughout this, you know, this has been more than a three-year-long process to get to this point. Along the way, we've had a lot of really excellent community engagement. Starting in spring of two thousand and twenty-two, we held a kickoff community meeting at the city council chambers as well as three focus groups. One that was for families and hosted by the Bellhaven Community Development Fund. One that was for Spanish-speaking residents, and that was held by CRC and El Comite. And then we had a third focus group that was like led and attended by a lot of community leaders. It was really a grassroots, community-led focus group towards the end. We also conducted a survey of more than three hundred Bellhaven households. And then that, all of that work informed the initial draft of the environmental justice element. Following that draft, we had more community meetings. We took that draft document back to the community and had conversations in both English and Spanish about what was in that document. In June, we presented that document here to the planning commission and the city council that resulted in revisions to the document and then another series of community meetings. Throughout this entire process, starting in March of two thousand and twenty-two, CRC helped organize the Bellhaven Climate Change Community Team. And that team has been meeting monthly ever since though about twenty-six, twenty-seven consecutive months now to discuss community priorities around environmental justice and any, any issue that's affecting the community. I'm sorry, you can go back for a second still. So during that, that process, that more than two, that more than two-year process, almost three-year process, we went through a lot of different things. There was COVID, of course. We had a four-day power outage in the community and about what seems like more atmospheric rivers than I could count on one hand. And these conversations, again with more than eighteen hundred Bellhaven residents, were extremely revealing about the need and the urgency of this work and also about a lack of trust in government to see these dreams of the community actually come to fruition. There is extreme climate vulnerability here in the Bellhaven neighborhood. There is the impending threat of sea level rise and groundwater rise. There is extreme heat, which we know and have seen more and more each summer. There's a lack of tree canopy and air pollution. And here in this neighborhood specifically, And here in this neighborhood specifically, we're contending with the consequences of redlining. Of racialized zoning practices, of segregation. And the consequences of those policies have compounded over the decades. It's a debt that has been collecting interest for 60, 70, 80 years. And this environmental justice element is a repayment plan. And one that will improve the lives of all Menlo Park residents. It's a roadmap to address the climate hazards that are affecting the Bellhaven neighborhood. Including air pollution, transit, traffic, and the threat of displacement from the community. And while these issues will affect Bellhaven residents first and worst. By addressing them comprehensively, we will create a better Menlo Park for all of us. Because displacement is something that affects families and neighbors and friends. There are people on both sides of the 101 that love one another and value the community that we have. And these policies offer us an opportunity to. Address these issues holistically and from a process. A process that has been grounded by and led by the community from its very inception. So in those conversations, there were three clear priorities that emerged. And this doesn't mean that the other things are, you know, optional. But that these are the issues that residents found most pressing. And they're often related directly to really fundamental, basic needs. So the top priority that emerged among conversations with all of our residents, eight, over 1,800 folks that were represented in this process. The top priority was providing safe, sanitary and stable homes. Which means preventing displacement from the community and addressing home safety issues. The second top priority was promoting access to high-quality and affordable food. The third priority was about, or the third most pressing issue residents identified was reducing pollution exposure. And improving air quality in the neighborhood. So your home, access to food and a healthy environment to live in. Were the foundational, basic needs that residents offered as a clear priority to to address here in the neighborhood. I think, oh, sorry, one, one, one second on that point, then I'll turn it back. So I think we we already heard from one commenter today, Arena, about folks who are. You know, waiting for the bus without shade, without seats, and that's something again and again that we heard brought up throughout this process. There were also a lot of stories about people who were tenants and worried about. Asking about, you know, repairs to their home. They they felt that they couldn't ask a landlord. About making those repairs that were affecting their safety, but they were worried that they would have to move out if those concerns were addressed. One member of the Climate Change Community Team was even diagnosed with asthma during this process. And. Again, struggles with asthma was something that we heard come up over and over again in conversations with residents. And if you look at the survey data that we collected. The incidence of asthma in the Bellhaven neighborhood was more than twice as high as that in the rest of Menlo Park. So. This process has surfaced very clear priorities. And I think that. It's remarkable to see that action is already being taken in some respects to address those priorities. For example, meeting in the Bellhaven neighborhood, having the city council and the planning commission meet. Here instead of on the other side of the 101 was one of the priorities that residents suggested in these conversations. And, you know, even if it's been a little bit halted today. I think the fact that there's 30 people here for this conversation is already a testament to. That being something that's going to create a more just and equitable Menlo Park. We're also already seeing action around affordable housing and the anti-displacement strategy. So I think it's remarkable to see that the voices of residents through this process are already being heard. And I think it's important that we take that the rest of the way and across the line here for adoption. So thank you all for for listening and thank you all for being here today.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for that summary. And to our interpreters, we'll be beginning again on slide nine. Next slide. So following our two community meetings in Bellhaven in the May timeframe. As well as two study sessions with the planning commission and city council in June. The project team had the opportunity to revise the EJ element and safety element. In response to community input as well as the commissions and council feedback. The next few slides that will show will highlight different revisions for both elements. As well as the EJ element action guide, which are both included in your staff report this evening. We will also highlight some refined or added EJ programs. For each element, a revisions and feedback log is provided to record feedback from the study sessions. As well as identify how the comments were addressed in the revised elements. For the safety element, some of the revisions highlighted include. The identification of Senate Bill 272, which is a requirement. For efforts to collaboratively develop a regional shoreline adaptation plan. Clarification that Menlo Park's local hazard mitigation plan is part of the county-wide multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan. As well as revisions to include more information on a variety of topics, including soft-story buildings, sea level rise and climate change. Cooling centers and storm-related issues as well as emergency preparedness. A significant highlight for the EJ element is the presentation. Of a streamlined, reformatted and redesigned adoption draft version. Of the element, which is included as Attachment A, Exhibit A. This would be the clean copy version of the EJ element. A track changes version is also provided as Attachment J. The EJ element revisions and feedback generally focus on clarifying presentation of information. As well as actions and accountability following adoption. It also emphasizes pollution reduction and air quality improvements. As well as enhancing community outreach and collaboration with stakeholders, as well as strengthening support for housing. As introduced in some prior meetings, the EJ element is accompanied by an action guide. Which is provided as staff report attachment M. The action guide is a separate but complementary document that lies outside of the general plan itself. The action guide is a tool to be used to manage and coordinate different city efforts to accomplish the goals. Policies and programs outlined in the EJ element. This dual-document approach allows for more frequent updating of the action guide in response to changing community needs. Funding opportunities as well as ongoing community outreach, particularly from Menlo Park's underserved communities. All while not requiring a general plan amendment. The action guide has been streamlined for ease of use as well as reformatted to highlight the different. Community identified priorities as well as to minimize the additional detail formally shown in an expanded matrix form. From the top three community identified priorities. Programs and action items that are noted with a short-term initiation timeframe. Meaning zero to three years following EJ element adoption. Will be prioritized for sooner action and are already underway. City staff, community partners, outside agencies, or a combination of all these groups can help implement these actions and programs. The action, the action guide will be maintained on the city's website and is intended to improve accountability. By being more adaptable as well as responsive to different community deeds and opportunities. Following the June 2024 study sessions, three EJ element programs related to the action guide were either refined or added. Program EJ 7J was refined to clarify that the action guide has annual reporting. Including provision to the city council as well as making sure it's available for everyone to see on the city's website. Program 7K is a new program. Which helps clarify the action guide progress updates as well as a process for revision with ongoing outreach. Program 7L includes city council consideration of our community identified EJ priorities. During upcoming annual priority and goal-setting workshops. In closing, through this presentation, we've had the opportunity to overview project milestones as well as community outreach. As well as highlighting different refinements to the environmental justice and safety elements. Since the April 2024 drafts and June 2024 study sessions. That recommends that the planning commission adopt resolutions recommending the city council amend the general plan. To include Menlo Park's first environmental justice element and to also update the safety element. Concurrently, to determine the actions are addressed in a previously certified subsequent environmental impact report. Under the California Environmental Quality Act. Within the staff report, there are two attachments. Attachment A is the draft commission resolution recommending environmental justice element adoption. And attachment B is the same commission's resolution recommending safety element update adoption. Looking ahead, the planning commission feedback from this evening as well as any recommendations will be forwarded to the city council. And tentatively, on September 24th, the city council will conduct a public meeting. To consider the planning commission's recommendations and to consider adoption. We invite all members to of the public to visit our project website at menlopark.gov/housingelement. Where we'll provide the latest updates as well as there's an opportunity to sign up for the email list. Please do sign up for the email list so that we can keep all those interested informed of any upcoming meetings as well as progress to advance environmental justice and safety. So with that, we'll close staff's presentation and we are available for any questions from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan and Mr. Kennedy. I appreciate the presentation. In just a moment, we are going to open it up to public comment on this agenda item regarding. Environmental justice element and the safety element. But before we move to public comment, I will ask if there are commissioners who have clarifying questions. At this moment about the presentation or clarifying questions from the staff report. Commissioner Sillen, a clarifying question.
Thank you. Yeah, a question for staff. Between today and the potential meeting with council a month from now. Is staff expecting to make any further changes based on commission feedback today? Or are we simply kind of expecting a vote yes or no on the document as is?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Sillen. We definitely welcome your feedback and will do our best to incorporate any feedback. We will also be taking your feedback and forwarding to the planning commit of to the city council for consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sillen. Do other commissioners have any clarifying questions at this time? Seeing none, Mr. Pruder, could you please provide instructions and begin public comment period for this agenda item?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. At this time, we will be having public comment for this item. Any member of the public is welcome to. Use, go to the back table and write a comment card. If you'd like to provide public comment, you may give it to me. Alternatively, if you are on Zoom, you can press the hand icon. And we will be notified of your desire to speak on this item. In addition, if any members of the public are calling by phone, you can press star nine on your keypad. And that will also notify us that you would like to speak publicly on this item. At this time. I have one public commenter who has provided a card and on Zoom. We have no hands raised, so we can begin the public comment process if you'd like with the member of the public who is in person. And we can see if others would like to join. Thank you.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Pruder.
So my first comment card is Pam Jones. You may now begin speaking and you will have three minutes. To speak. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, staff and consultants. My name is Pamela Jones. I'm a longtime resident. Even closer. How about that?
Thank you.
So good evening again, and thank you for being here. All right.
Sorry, we'll just start over on the time. Sorry about that. Just one moment.
No problem.
Please begin.
All right. Good evening, commissioners, staff and consultants. Welcome to the Bellhaven Neighborhood Community Campus. Thank you so much for being here. My name is Pamela Jones. I'm a longtime resident of the Menlo Park, Bellhaven neighborhood. And I am a member of a number of organizations, but I'm here representing and speaking only for myself. I want to first of all commend the staff for the incredible work that they've done in looking at the timeline. And the number of revisions and revisions and revisions. It's really remarkable from where we began and where we are now with this document. I also want to thank CRC staff because one of the things that they did is they kept us moving along. They always showed us the progress so that we didn't get bogged down and, oh, no, are they going to listen to us? I do know that overall that this was a very heavy lift and I focused mainly on goal. EJ seven, and that is that the most challenging point. Is to get the information out to all of the community of there's a meeting, any information that's really pertinent to the community. And knowing that our community does, well, no community all uses the web. I mean, there's a lot of people do that are online. There's a lot that are not, so we need to have multiple methods of contacting residents. To make sure they have the options. They may not show up, but at least they know about it. A reminder is that in 2012, 2013, when the Bellhaven visioning was done. There was, they came up with a fairly successful way of doing outreach. It included having a person that lived in the community do the outreach in the community. And they were also, of course, bilingual. So that's, look back over what they did years ago and see that maybe there's something in there we can use today. They also did a newsletter. It was a follow-up on what we had talked about in the past with progress the city was doing and announcements. And it was only quarterly. So that too, I imagine, was was manageable. Yes, we have all this information online, but again, a lot of people don't go online in order to get their information. And they may not even use a cellphone. Okay, I'm just learning how to use it and I still get. and I still get information from my grandchildren on, you know, to try this, that, and the other. I'd also like to say that it would have been helpful to have the document a little sooner. I think they got it to us as soon as they could, but it would have been nice to have the information sooner so that we could really do a comparison of the information. So again, thank you, and most of all, I want to thank the staff.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have one additional public commenter who would like to speak in person right now, named Marlene. You will have three minutes when you're ready at this time. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners, staff, and members of the community. My name is Marlene Sandoyo. I am a recent Bellhaven resident, and I also have helped organize the community for the last three years, specifically on the EJ element, but also just getting their participation in the city processes, the housing element, and trying to get their voice out. I really appreciate the extensive outreach that has been done in the community. And I'd like to go over a few programs that I think may need a little bit more revision or in ways that I've like heard community members talk about things and trying to make sure that they're also in the action in the programs of this document. One of them is action item 67, to facilitate a physical activity. It refers to lighting, like putting more lighting in areas that are essential and making sure that community members are part of that process, but also that there is regular maintenance of this lighting, because I know that there's residents that actually go walking around the neighborhood to make sure that the lightings are working. And if not, they actually call Public Works themselves to get that sorted out. And I've heard a few times that the lighting gear at Kelly Park isn't working, and so then, you know, members don't feel safe coming. So regular maintenance of that would be great. Also, we had a comment today about having shade for like public transportation, so for bus stops. And I think that's something that is not included. Like, it's not an action item in the documents. I think that would be really great to add. And I think, as Pam said, like a little bit more time for the community members to actually take a deep dive into this document. I understand it's very long. We've tried our best to get community feedback, but I think that if we can have it presented in the way that the community can actually look at it and give feedback directly to the document, that would be great. And I know that staff has gotten lots of feedback and comments, so just kind of taking a look over that to make sure that everything, as much as we can, can be included in the document. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much. At this time, I see no hands raised. I've received no additional comment cards. We can wait a little longer, if you'd like, to ensure all comments have been provided.
Thank you. Let's just give it another few moments, give folks an opportunity. Mr. Pruder, do we have any other hands raised online or comment cards received here this evening?
I see no additional hands raised online, and I see no additional interested commenters in person. If you'd like, you may close public comment at this time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Seeing no other requests for public comment, we will close that part of the agenda, we'll close public comment, and move into discussion by the Planning Commission, and ultimately, two motions. The first motion will address recommending that the city council amend the general plan to include an environmental justice element. And the second motion that will address recommending the city council update the safety element. So at this time, I will open it up for Planning Commissioners for questions or commentary. Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. It's so exciting to be in this space and to see how many more people were, hopefully, made it easier for Bellhaven residents to come here tonight. I'm sure after a day of work and kids, just having something in your community makes it that much easier to attend. At our previous June 3 meeting, a public comment from Ms. Jones. Ms. Jones said, "We cannot undo the harm that's been done for 70 years. We're going to do the best that we can with it, and we have the obligation to do it." And I just hope that it doesn't take 70 years to see progress on this so that people can see it within their lifetimes, within their childhood. So I just wanted to express appreciation to staff. The Action Guide, which is cleaner and more legible, I appreciated that, contrary to your previous draft, the goals are organized with the policies, programs, and actions. See how the things at the bottom support the things above it. It's really a compliment to CRC, really drawing out the themes important to the community and staff hearing that and organizing in a way that reflects that. And just to bounce to the safety element, I, whether it's for this round or for a subsequent update, I believe the safety element could benefit from how the environmental justice element is organized. Currently, the safety element has goals and policies all listed and then programs separately. So you have to kind of jump around to see how the programs implement those policies. So hopefully, that's easy enough just formatting the information so that people can actually ascertain these programs make sense with the related policies. And I appreciate the Action Guide is intended to be more flexible and to live outside of the state requirements to update its elements every eight years. Just living here, the past six years, we had crazy orange sky and wildfire in 2020 to atmospheric rivers and loss of power for three to four days in early 2023 and early 2024. So in less than eight years, we have seen just how extreme weather can be. And the scary thing about the effects of climate change is its unpredictability and scale and frequency and continue to impact a community already hard-hit by man-made and natural events. So I appreciate the flexibility, the dynamic nature of the Action Guide. I had another comment, too, on the biosafety levels relating to the safety element. I wanted to acknowledge that I believe it's not been incorporated into the safety element, but City Council had a, made it very clear that it will come back as a study session. So I just wanted to express appreciation for that decision and direction by the City Council and to acknowledge that it's a very urgent topic, given that we already have neighbors living adjacent to biosafety labs and thanks to the community members who have elevated that topic repeatedly. And I believe that's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. Commissioner Farrak.
Thank you, and thank you for this presentation and again, for the really great outreach over the last several years. My question is really probably best for Community Development Director Chow or potentially Mr. Smith. And it's really around, you know, how these incredible goals and priorities that have now been established or are in the process of being established, how they come to life, and can you just talk about how a city funds them or how they become reality or, you know, and kind of, just to kind of set context there?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Farrak and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Deanna Chow, the Community Development Director. So that's a question, and I think that's what this is all about. And so how do we use policies, programs, goals into action? And so I think one of the big first steps is funding. As part of our current budget, the fiscal year '24, '25, the City Council did set aside $1 million to help see the funding of implementation of our programs. The Action Guide does identify, according to the top three goals and the priorities that were identified in the presentation, those are sort of at the top of the Action Guide. And then in that, you'll see things that are short-term, medium-term, and long-term. I'm pleased to say many of those things are things that are currently underway, things that might be funded by other funding sources, if they're part of the capital improvement program. And then again, this additional set aside, that was from the Bayfront Mitigation Fund. So the programs itself, we established a few. That is part of our goal-setting session. It'd be communicated through the city council. That happens yearly, usually at the beginning of the year. Then that helps sets department work plans, the city council priorities, and then that feeds into the budget cycle. So that is sort of the routine that we hope to implement. We did incorporate another program that identifies a yearly reporting system. So that is to help the community stay informed about where we are in the progress of these items. We'll make that more visible on our webpage. We're working through what that is going to look like. But that is the goal of the action item. So to make it more digestible, there's a lot of policy conversation in the document, but it's the Action Guides that came out of the really good feedback that we received during our engagement process that will be used to do our programming and to maintain the flexibility to go potentially around as potential needs of the community change.
All set? Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Farrak. Thank you, Chow. Other Commissioner questions or comments? Commissioner Sillen.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to start by thanking staff for listening to the community and the commission regarding further modifications from the study session. So I really appreciated having the changes tracked at the top of each document and especially knowing what was changed and based on feedback from where, like it said, you know, feedback from the commission or council or staff. So that was really helpful, and the red-line versions were also very helpful. So just want to thank staff for working on all that and providing that in a relatively short timeframe. I want to second what Commissioner Doe said about the action plan. It's the new format I really like as well. It's ordered by, you know, community priorities come first, and it's cleaner and easier to follow. Couple of just little sort of administrative requests from me would be, in the staff report, there were a lot of attachments, and it was hard to find each of the attachments further down in the document. So it'd be nice if page numbers were provided or hyperlinks for each attachment, if it's in the staff report. And it would be great to have an Excel version of any major tables, such as the action plan, for myself personally. And I know at least one other Planning Commissioner would appreciate having it in that format to make it easy, just kind of sort it, filter it, digest it. And perhaps there are community members that would appreciate that as well. Regarding the, what we're talking about today, I appreciate what Mr. Kennedy said about the fact that this process is largely or could be thought of as a repayment on previous wrongs. And so it must be taken very seriously. You know, we've had, like Mr. Kenny outlined, a lot of community meetings and focus groups. And I think the implication of gathering a lot of community feedback is that it will be heard and acted upon. And so now that, as we're nearing the end of the process with formalizing the plan, for me personally, I think, of course, the most important thing is going to be moving forward, translating those community voices to outcomes, results, actions, and communicating that back to the community, making sure that everyone's aware of what's being done, what's not being done, why, and so forth. And I think we should be honest. I would encourage staff in these annual updates to be honest about, you know, shortcomings or changes in priority. It's better to, you know, communicate why something didn't get done or why it fell off the list or got deprioritized rather than not mention it at all. Because again, since we have all this community feedback coming in, I think it's just important that the community also feels, and like Mr. Kenny said, there's a lack of trust. So to build that trust, I would just really value over-communication and a clear understanding for commission members, city council, as well as residents about where things are at. And so today, I think a lot of my comments will focus on that accountability and communication. I guess the main question I would like to start with is just, I believe in the last feedback meeting and even today, Commissioner Farrak is asking about funding. To me, in an ideal world, the action plan would specify for the things that haven't been started yet, especially the short-term things. What we're waiting on, is it funding, is it staff resources? And also, a key point of contact, I see we have like a lead agency for each item, but I believe last time we discussed having perhaps like an email that community members can reach out to so that people can feel like there's somebody behind these expected actions. So my question for staff is, is that something that staff has considered? Is that reasonable? What are your thoughts? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sillen. I can begin to try to address some of your points, and if other members of the project team would like to chime in, please do so as well. So in terms of the Action Guide, you're right for the funding sources. We've listed some potential funding sources that are known at this time for this long-range planning document. We don't want to get so specific to bog us down or like tie us down, but we also want to include the specificity that we know today. So what you see in the document is what we have identified through working with our different colleagues in different departments of different potential funding sources that could be pursued. In terms of the lead role, we really see that as the person that will be leading the charge for that particular action item or program. But definitely, a lot of these things are cross-departmental, cross-divisions. They require a lot of different people to coordinate those efforts in terms of like one point of contact for advancing the environmental justice element. That would be the Community Development Department as a whole. We would be shepherding this as part of that long-range planning effort.
Thank you. So is it safe to say that if a community member is looking at the action plan and they're wondering about item A or B, you are recommending that they contact the Community Development Department with their questions throughout the year?
Yes, certainly. I think we've begun this process in 2021. We've had so much great interaction with the community members, and we'd love the opportunity to continue building that trust and those relationships.
Okay, thanks. And then, yeah, regarding the funding, I understand what you're saying about sources of funding and where funding might come from. But what about simply stating which items on the list have funding and for which we're still seeking funding? Because maybe my understanding is wrong. I'm assuming, I was looking at the list of action items that have not been started yet that are short-term. I'm assuming those have not been started either due to a staffing consideration. The department can only do so many things at one time, or we still don't have funding, or maybe option C. But would it make sense to list whatever that may be and make it clear what needs to happen before it gets done?
I think we could certainly look at that, and some of those reasons why something has stalled or not been started yet could come out in that Action Guide reporting that will be will be part of this process. You mentioned being very transparent and being open about different shortcomings or things that are giving pause. So we will definitely do our best to identify those as we proceed with implementing this action guide.
Okay, thank you. And a follow-up question on community feedback. I saw that the annual action guide update item in the action guide mentions the annual update, and it says it will include outreach, particularly in underserved communities. It also says outreach to further environmental justice will be ongoing. Could you elaborate on currently what you imagine that process will look like, the outreach and interaction with the community?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Silin. So certainly, I think we've learned a lot of different valuable lessons throughout this process. Definitely the biggest lesson, at least for me, as one of the people working on this project, is we really need to make a concerted effort to meet people where they are. And today is a great example of that, with us having this first planning commission meeting at the Bellhaven Community Campus. So as we look ahead to implementing the EJ element, I really see us making more efforts to continue building along that relationship that we've had with the community, meeting people where they are, whether it's in-person meetings here at the Bellhaven Community Campus, having dedicated office hours in different parts of the city, having a dedicated, I know a concierge-type person was also mentioned. I know there's a lot of interest in that. But through electronic outreach, as well as physical door-to-door, hard copy, those multimedia, different ways of reaching people, those are definitely top of mind. The city does have a communications and public outreach division. So we work very closely with them to continue to make sure that our outreach efforts are of good quality. And of course, we'll supplement our efforts with working with different community partners, including but not limited to climate-resilient communities.
Thank you. So if the elements are adopted by city council in September, when would the first annual update be?
So the city council has annual goal setting, I believe, in the spring timeframe. So even just in a few months, we need to already begin starting to populate and update from what we even have here today. This will be an ongoing effort, and our goal is to make sure that our action guide is as up-to-date as possible, to reflect what the city is doing, and to be able to communicate all the good work that the city is doing for the community and with the community.
Thank you. So for community members that want to continue to follow these updates and perhaps be involved in any further outreach or focus groups, what do you recommend is the best way to make sure they're notified? I heard some of the public commenters meeting, mentioning that they would have liked to have more time, or they have trouble, you know, finding out about these things. What do you recommend is one or two of the best ways that folks can stay updated?
Thank you. So certainly, the best way, I think, is to definitely encourage people to sign up for our email list, which is at menlopark.gov/housingelement. There's a "How to Get Involved" tab that can be expanded. And please enter your email there. That's where we send regular updates on anything related to the housing element, EJ element, as well as the safety element. And looking ahead, we'll be looking at different website improvements to continually improve our messaging and make sure that our communications are clear. We also gladly welcome any feedback if there are different ways that we could better connect with the community. We definitely want to hear that feedback. So please do reach out to us.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions at this time. Thank you, Chair Schindler.
Thank you, Commissioner Silin. Commissioner Silverstein?
Thank you. I want to thank city staff for putting this together. I also want to thank everyone for being here. It's really fantastic to see more people in this planning commission meeting than I've seen in a long time. And it's, it's great to be able to talk about all of this. I have a couple generic comments about the environmental justice element. The first is regarding the general theme of implementation. I know that things take a long time, and I know that they're complicated. But in my limited experience to various projects with city government, things take too long. As noted, the CJ element has been in progress for over three years, and we still don't have shade or benches at our bus stops. A lot of the bigger projects do require public outreach, public comment, coalition building, and that can have absolutely amazing benefits for the larger and controversial projects. But it slows down making the clear and obvious improvements that we need. And we often spend thousands of dollars, if not tens of thousands of dollars, on consultants. We spend years of studies before making even simple changes. I would love it if some of these elements could be re-identified as quick fixes. That could just be implemented by the individual government departments that own it, as opposed to having to go back to city council for a new resolution and just slow things down. Prior to being on the planning commission, I was on the Complete Streets Commission, and there was this bifurcation of certain projects, some of which were major changes, and they would obviously go through city council and public notice and meetings, and some of which were very minor changes, restriping or, you know, changing a turn. And that could just be done. And a lot of these things can just be done. So I, I don't want to go into all the details, but it'd be great if we could identify the simple ones that then don't need to take another year before we even implement them. I know it's been talked about before, but with the funding sources, I don't have a recommendation regarding the EJ element itself. But as we think about amending and continuing to update the action guide, it would be great to know whether or not our expectation is that its funding sources would be sufficient. So for a lot of the action items, we've identified a possible grant, but I have no understanding of whether or not that grant would give us the million out of a million dollars, or if it would only be 10%. And so, you know, obviously, that will have to happen over time. But as staff gets that understanding, it'd be great to update the information as part of updating the community, just so we know, hey, this thing is either likely to get funded or not, or it's a, it's a long ways away. I do have one comment on the actual environmental justice element itself. I mentioned this when we were, the draft of it, at a planning commission meeting earlier, but I still don't think that the report does a sufficient job to quantify the actual environmental impacts of different pollutant sources. There are 10 or more different pollution indicators, and each of them are rated on a percentile basis relative to other communities in Menlo Park and all of California. But it doesn't go into any detail of trying to quantify the impact of that percentile. I'll give an example on, this is on page 100 of the agenda. Bellhaven Census tract is the 96th percentile in lead risk in housing. It's also the 94th percentile in pollutants from traffic impacts. I have no idea the magnitude of those different percentiles. It's possible that lead risk in housing has been eliminated over time, and it's not actually a big deal, and being 96th percentile is bad relative to others, but it doesn't actually matter as much. Or it's possible that it's a really big deal and is an immediate concern that needs to be solved. And there's nothing that I saw in this report that allows people to say, these are where, these are the pollutants where our community is being impacted the most. The last thing that I wanted to opine on, and this is less a comment on element itself, but I want us to take the opportunity to use this dais to give general feedback and to talk to other members of the planning commission around this. It's in regards to priority number two for the community, or element J4, which is access to high-quality and affordable food. Obviously, a very important element of any neighborhood and any community. It's not a surprise whatsoever that this is high on anyone's priority list. When some newer large, large apartment buildings were approved last year in the Bayfront neighborhood, hundreds of units each, I was dismayed that none of them included any ground floor grocery stores, cafes, restaurants, or any stores at all. I wasn't on the planning commission at the time, so I asked members of city council and the planning commission, why not? And the answer I received was that retail isn't always successful, and we can't mandate it, and it's not a guarantee. And so we just left it alone. And what we're left with is a Bayfront neighborhood that will have hundreds of new residents with nowhere to get groceries and nowhere to go out to dinner within walking distance. The developers that are building these projects are making millions of dollars. And in doing so, I think it's not unreasonable for us as a community, as a commission, as a city council, to require that as part of community building, we think about elements beyond just the housing and what it takes to actually have a vibrant community and a neighborhood. And that, to me, would be one of the things that I'll be looking to my fellow commissioners, if any of these future projects come to the table, when it comes to making sure that these neighborhoods do have access to a simple grocery store. And that's it. Thank you very much for everything.
Commissioner Silver, excuse me, Commissioner Silverstein. I'll take this opportunity to just also share my gratitude for the evolution of the environmental justice element, particularly the action plan, and the continued work on the safety element as well. I appreciate the pivot, just starting with the naming convention of the action plan. When we saw it last time, it was an implementation, implementation guide, but now we're actually focused on action. And the last time we talked about this document, we made the distinction between an input, so gathering the inputs and sort of what was important. And I think a spectacular job was done before we saw this in June and has continued since then. This is a document that reflects a tremendous amount of community involvement, many voices, a lot of hard work by a lot of people. So the input phase is fantastic, and we've captured it. But now, when we also talked about inputs, we talked about outputs. And the important part is to now look forward. And I think many of the comments, look forward in terms of how we keep track of the goals we're setting and the promises that we want to keep. Many of the comments that have been made here tonight about, for example, tracking funding or understood by my other commissioners, like, what's the funding? Where are things being blocked? Is it a question of staff? Is it a question of priorities? Is it a question of, you know, identifying the funding source or bringing that funding to fruition? I think can be part of output that can be baked into the reporting that's been committed to. It can be baked into the next iterations of these action plans. So again, huge kudos to the folks who've just been thinking about how to structure all of this information and forward-looking. Because not only is this a document that is great for input, it's going to be great for output going forward. So thank you very much. I have a couple of just small comments, particularly under goal, under number seven, about creating equitable civic and community engagement, just for consideration as this moves forward for city council review. 7J made an addition that talked about committing to annual reporting at a minimum to the city council and made available on the city website. I wanted to borrow that concept of setting sort of a minimum threshold and put it into a 7L, which talks about, says the city council shall consider the community-identified environmental justice priorities during its annual priority and goal-setting workshops. And I'd love to see the concept of at a minimum. That's how it becomes part of city operations. I think Ms. Chow earlier alluded to, you know, there are city council planning sessions, and then there are departmental priorities. And having helped run a large organization in the past, I know that there are even quarterly and monthly and weekly decisions that need to be made. And I, I hope that part of the culture of goal-setting and evaluating priorities can be, we constantly go back to this document, we constantly go back to this list and say, okay, we're trying to figure out what to do in October. We're trying to figure out what to do in January. Let's go back to the goals and just touch base. I have full faith that that's what's going to happen, but I appreciate the opportunity to institutionalize that in the document. I also wanted to specifically express enthusiastic support for, it's an action item. It's Program 7D, and it's an action item four, so 74, which in the document says encouraging representation from all districts in the city, on city boards and commissions. And since we are the planning commission, I wanted to specifically address this, the opportunity for members of the Bellhaven community and Bayfront community to be part of the planning commission as that, as those positions open up. Every project that the planning commission considers, and certainly tonight's topic, but really every topic that we're asked to engage in, could benefit from the insights of a commissioner who lives in Bellhaven or Bayfront. I certainly feel strongly that that is the case. And I hope that some of the community members that are here tonight or listening at home, online, would consider the planning commission and other commission openings as they, as they occur. Those are the key things that I wanted to speak on as it relates to the environmental justice element. Like other commissioners have said, for the safety element, I don't have any concerns with any of the modifications that were noted in the tracked changes document. And I definitely support for the topic of biosafety levels. I think pursuing that via a staff-led study session, as advised by city council, is an appropriate next step. It has certainly come up on a number of occasions. And I think I'm glad to see that it's going to, it will be addressed, even if it's not explicitly included in the safety element. Do commissioners have other comments or questions or follow-up points at this time? Commissioner Doe?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I, in addition to all these fantastic, high-level and detailed feedback from my fellow commissioners, I wanted to ask staff if it would be possible to incorporate Ms. Sintoyos' comment about community members concerned with lighting under EJ 6D7 to add, incorporate regular maintenance, explicitly call that out. And also to our previous commenter, I'm sorry, I didn't catch her name, bus shelters, I also, if specifically that could be included as one of the, you know, it's that you do a great job of listing, like, complete sidewalks and lack of shade trees. And I, and I think bus shelters, shade, and benches is not explicitly listed. And I think that would be nice if that could be incorporated. Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may. So for that recommendation, you could incorporate it as part of a motion when it comes time to, to make a vote on the resolutions, if you would like for that to be considered by council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Commissioner Silin, you look like you have a follow-up question.
Yes, thank you, Chair Schindler. Yeah,
Yeah, I was, I had a similar question for staff. So if we add something like that to a motion, and I think this is part of a bigger question that I have, is there a downside? Meaning, does something else get deprioritized? Or, you know, is there, is this just something that can be added on top to the existing list? For these particular requests, which were to support shade for bus stops and regular
I think those are items that could be added as clarifications to existing programs and action items. And so I think that would be a reasonable thing. It wouldn't necessarily push something else out of the running for a near-term fix or something like that.
Thank you. Chair Schindler have another question? It's okay.
Please.
Yeah, so kind of in line with that, so I'm looking at the list of the action plan, and it looks like we have, by my count, about thirty-nine items in progress with another forty-one items listed for short-term initiation within the next three years. And, you know, like Commissioner Silverstein said, some of those might be bigger items that require a lot of coordination, some of them might be quick little things that can be done relatively fast. But I'm just wondering if staff could elaborate on maybe how confident they feel in those items being initiated within the next three years? Again, in the spirit of accountability, we're kind of considering this document as, in my mind, a relatively realistic plan of what the community could expect to be done. Of course, things happen, pandemics and so forth, but barring anything like that, should the average community member expect to see, let's say, eighty, ninety percent of those things initiated within the next three years? Or is this more of kind of an optimistic reach version of what staff would really like to accomplish, but perhaps, you know, we could expect a lot of things to run up against other priorities?
Thank you, Commissioner Sillin. So definitely what is in the action guide listed as short-term initiation, those are things that the project team has heard that are of great importance to the community and also in a partnership with different people at the city as well as other community partners. We feel that those are things that we can pursue in that short-term timeframe to make them happen. So definitely there is the intent to make those things come to fruition. But of course, each thing that has a short-term initiation timeframe attached to it, we also have to study and then make sure that we can do that. So it's going to be a collaboration between city staff, community partners, and we welcome all individuals to get involved in this process. Advancing environmental justice will not just be under the city's sole direction, but it definitely is a whole community effort.
Yeah, and I, thank you. I think we discussed this last time, but my concern is just, you know, all these departments within the city and outside of the city that are listed as lead or support, each have their own list of priorities that they're pursuing. And I'm worried that we have this kind of planning process we've gone through, but then after it's all approved, we go to these departments and say, hey, we just approved this environmental justice element, we need to do these things for the next three years. And departments go like, oh, well, we have this whole other list of things we need to do. So is that a reasonable concern? Or has there been coordination already with these other departments to make sure these things prioritize, these things are prioritized? I believe last time we talked about someone being a quarterback that's constantly, like Chair Schindler was saying, following up with these departments on a regular basis to make sure things don't fall off as their priorities change. Can you speak more to that, please?
Thank you, Commissioner Sillin. So to address your question of whether or not different departments and divisions have had the opportunity to review and give input, yes, they certainly have. All city departments have been thoroughly involved in this process from the very beginning since 2021. As part of the multiple revisions and document milestones that we outlined in the presentation, staff and as well as CRC, they've been involved every step of the way to integrate the city perspective and our experience of what we know can be done. But also CRC helps bring that other side of, these are the community priorities and importance. So we definitely met in the middle to make sure what is reflected in the document reflects what the community wants and places high importance on, but also putting that lens of what the city thinks is possible to pursue in the different timeframes.
Thank you. Yeah, I think my final kind of summary is again, just reiterating what I think everybody else up here is, the other commissioners are saying, which is, we feel strongly, or I won't speak behalf on the other, I feel strongly that this is a big commitment. There's a lot of items in the action plan, just the sheer number, you know, eighty things, I believe roughly total in progress or short-term. And so I just again want to reiterate, like Chair Schindler was saying, thank you staff for taking the time to listen, gather input, create this very well-formatted document. And moving forward, I just think it's very important to focus on implementation, action, I suppose, keeping the community updated and being as clear and transparent as possible about what is and is not getting done. But based on your answers today, I trust that you guys can do it. So looking forward to that. Thank you. Yes, sorry, I'll just wrap up by saying I would support both, a motion to approve both elements and add on Commissioner Doe's suggestions about incorporating the community feedback, but I don't want to make a motion until all commissioners have had a chance to provide input. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sillin. We have other comments or questions, statements of support? I don't see any hands raised, so I'll make one brief one myself. The word trust keeps coming up. So I think, I think Mr. Kennedy talked about it in terms of something that was missing to some extent in some of the input processes. And again, I just think that all of the asks that have been made here today are about having trust in the process and building trust that the city is doing everything it can and maybe even going well beyond what has been possible in the past to address the environmental justice inequities that exist in our community. And I would, I look forward to, I guess, the spring. We heard that the first possible set of reporting on these goals will come up in the spring, so it's not even annually. For those being things that we, the Planning Commission see, I think that the whole city will see. Because again, I think the statement was made that the issues addressed in this report may happen here first and worst in these communities, but they eventually affect all of Menlo Park, either directly or indirectly. So this is a report for the entire city as well. And with that, I will turn to commissioners and see if potentially there is a motion or an amended motion to be brought specifically for the first component here. I'll just clarify, go back to my notes. Looking for a motion with regard to recommending that the City Council amend the general plan to include an environmental justice element. There'll be another potential second motion regarding the safety element.
Thank you, Chair. So that was a, you restated the first, is that right, from Commissioner Sillin? And then with the...
Well, I wasn't sure if Commissioner Sillin had made a first.
Okay.
I simply wanted to clarify that we will go, as we proceed, when we're ready, we will need to consider two separate motions. The first one would be with regard to amending the general plan to include the environmental justice element. That's the first one. And the second one would be recommending the City Council update the existing safety element with the contents that we have reviewed here tonight.
Thank you. So I, thank you for clarifying that that there is not a motion yet on the table. I would be happy to make a motion to recommend to City Council to adopt the environmental justice element. And hopefully it's immutable to other commissioners with the added clarification of the maintenance for the lighting and bus shelters, with the understanding that's added detail without displacing the priority of other items.
So we have a motion to recommend the City Council amend the general plan to include an environmental justice element with the clarifications that in the action plan, there would be language clarifying the need for bus shelters and seats at bus stops and that lighting would include maintenance of those lightings. Is that, did I correctly summarize, Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Okay. We have a second from Commissioner Silverstein. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, I will just make sure that staff has all the clarify, has the detail that they need on the particular, on the motion before we vote.
We just wanted to confirm there was a discussion about the words at a minimum in terms of reporting timeframes, whether that should be added as well as a recommendation or not.
So I think I had made a discussion about putting that in potentially as, as language related to staff operations. I hope that's considered, but I'm not, I'm not going to necessarily think it's a requirement to be added to the motion. Okay, seeing no further discussion, I will call a vote on the motion. Commissioner Doe? Yes. Commissioner Farrak? Yes. Commissioner Sillin?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So that is five in favor of the motion with two absences, and the motion moves forward. So then we would potentially at this point entertain a second motion regarding the safety The question, fair comment from Commissioner Silverstein, whether the public comment that we did in the first part of the meeting covered both components and we confirmed that it did, because we considered them as one agenda item at this time. But we will do this as a second motion because it's the second resolution in this document, and that's how City Council will consider it. Commissioner Silverstein?
So while we're on the topic of the safety element specifically, I did have two quick comments about the safety element, and I would also be happy to make a motion. But one is my understanding that gas-powered blowers were banned in Menlo Park as of July first this year. I also recall it not being unanimous vote and there being a three to two vote within the City Council to pass that. Not necessarily today, but in regards to safety, pollutants, noise, it would be great to get a update post-fact to see how that's doing. Was that a good decision overall? Do people have regrets? Is there, did it exceed all of our expectations? Because I know that one of the elements that contributes to overall safety. And then my last, just very generic soapbox comment, on page fifty-three hundred and fifty-three of the agenda packet shows a map of noise in Menlo Park by decibels by location. And it really, really emphasizes another vector of harm that excessive cars have in our community. We talk about pollutants, we talk about Vision Zero and safety and all sorts of things, but noise is something with respect to cars that doesn't get a lot of play. I'm really glad that it's a entire section of the safety element. And just wanted to remind everyone that where you live in respect to where our freeways are has a very high impact on noise specifically coming from cars. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Silverstein. Are there any other further comments about the safety element that we have not gotten to today? Thoughts or comments? And perhaps we are ready to entertain motion.
I would like to move to recommend City Council amend existing safety element with the updated one as it appears in tonight's agenda packet.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. To recommend the City Council update the safety element. No further discussions or hands raised from commissioners? I will, unless there are, the lights, okay. Go ahead and call a vote on that, this second motion. Commissioner Doe? Yes. Commissioner Farrak?
Yes.
Commissioner Sillin?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so that's five in favor and two absences, and the motion carries. Thank you. All right, so with that, I will close out the public hearing section of our agenda, and we will move on to our final section, informational updates. Mr. Smith, would anyone from staff wish to provide an update on upcoming Planning Commission meetings and agendas?
Yes, I'd just call your attention to the next Planning Commission meeting, which will be on September ninth. And we have one case scheduled for that meeting, which is a use permit in a minor subdivision for two single-family residences on an R2 lot. So we'll bring that forward in a couple weeks.
Thank you. Are there any other informational items from commissioners or any other staff? Seeing none, I will move to adjourn this meeting at nine oh four PM. Thank you all very much for a really fun meeting. And I'm sorry. Thank you very much for your assistance here this evening. It made it a much more inclusive and enjoyable meeting.